Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, everybody. We're calling the meeting order at 6:00 PM on September 20th, 2021 at the town hall. Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Some of it.
Any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
I'm aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have the minutes of September 7th. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Mr. Chair, number eight, just a typo. Next meeting is today, September 20th.
Yeah. I found that. Yep, thank you Suzanne.
Are there any other issues or directives? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes of September 7th, 2001. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
I'm aye.
Opposed?
John, would you please, John, would you second?
Okay, we have Gabriel from the Brown Door Development Credit Corporation to give us a call. So Gabriel, would you aye?
All right, thank you all. Where do I stand up here?
No, you're fine.
Well, thank you all for having me up here today. Thank you for the floor. My name is Gabriel Sester. You can hear on behalf of Brown Door Development Credit Corporation, which is grant anyone who doesn't know, we're the regional economic development organization for the Wyndham region. I'm the business prosperity and community project specialist there. And I'm also here on behalf of Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, STEVZ. The dynamic at BDCC and STEVZ is that BDCC supports the capacity and effort to really improve the economic vitality of the Wyndham region in general. That even includes a few towns in Bennington County. And then STEVZ serves as the larger research-focused entity of our two organizations that helps support finding outside dollars and bringing them into the region to support more enhanced capacity with building more programs to support longer-term economic development strategies. What I would like to do is give just a brief overview of some of our past impacts in Grafton and then run through some of our programs, give a brief explanation of some of our programs, and then hopefully allow time for any questions if that's okay. So in the past, this has been a very unique past two years for everyone, in particular businesses and economic development in the region. Everyone is aware that there was a pretty significant downturn. Because of the effort of BDCC and STEVZ to really have a consistent focus on improving our regional economic activity, even amidst coronavirus pandemic, we were able to help support businesses in Grafton specifically, received around $2.3 million in the paycheck protection program. We had one-on-one technical assistance counseling with some of those businesses who applied for that program. One of the programs that I run, the Community Facilities Technical Assistance Program, which we run in partnership with USDA Rural Development, supports grant and loan funding to eligible nonprofits and town offices in the region. I've had some connection with Mary and Steve from the Grafton Community Church to help support develop some of their infrastructure at that space. And I know that the Southern Vermont Economy Project and my colleague Sarah Lang have had some connections with Bill, I believe, in early discussions about some development and infrastructure planning in town of Grafton as well. And we have really recently, in particular because of STEVZ, sustained research and effort in bringing outside capital into our region. We've expanded our capacity at BDCC quite a bit. We now have a three-member business assistance team in which we can provide one-on-one support to people in the Wyndham region or in Grafton looking to start a business, looking to grow their business, looking to improve their planning, to set themselves up to hire even more personnel. We have ongoing business resiliency programming after the pandemic as well, which has helped bring in many state funds into the area to support what we call a pivot project for businesses. So a business that experienced a particularly intense slowdown because of the pandemic, we can help find grant funding or other loans that might sort of get them over that hurdle that they face. The Pipelines and Pathways Program is a program that we've been running and all the tools in the Wyndham region for a few years now, and that helps support career readiness for all of the high school and middle school students in the Wyndham region. And then overall, we have sustained efforts to help bring in more people into the region long-term and to support the overall growth of our region and keep it a vital place for us to be. And like I said, the Community Facilities Technical Assistance Program and the Southern Vermont Economy Project, both we run in partnership with USDA Rural Development, and that helps support direct technical assistance to town offices or nonprofits to provide more capacity-building expertise to those organizations in the area. And I think with that, if possible, I'd like to field any questions?
How many of these programs are funded by COVID money? Is it the business, any three-man member of business? Is that COVID?
Of the programs that we run?
Yeah.
So I believe some some funding for one individual on that team comes from COVID-related assistance. I'm not sure of the specifics of how that funding source works within our own organization.
So you did not, as a whole, go after some of the COVID money to promote businesses and encourage people to continue? I mean, you talk about your paycheck protection.
Yes.
That's part of it, isn't it?
It is, yes. So that was, the Paycheck Protection Program is a federal program that allowed businesses to remain operational throughout the pandemic. And our service to support that, it was still a federal application that businesses needed to go through. But our support through that was to provide one-on-one assistance with the business to help them, to help shepherd them through that application. Because speaking personally, working with USDA Rural Development, another federal entity, those applications are not straightforward processes. And there is a value in having an institution in the community who's able to support these businesses walk in through that so that they don't have to do absolutely all of that paperwork themselves.
Could you be specific about who in Grafton you helped with that technical impact?
So by, we keep record of those entities. I would be happy to provide that to the Select Board members, which I'll do.
Be great.
Yeah, which I'll do. But on principle, we prefer to keep that private to the entities.
That's fine.
I have a question. Since Wyndham County is now alone, there are people that don't want to work. So like the taverns close two days a week because they can't fulfill, they can't employees to keep it open. And the employees can't like seven days a week. Well, obviously, when they, when they close two days, it affects the town. It affects the store, it affects them as well. Can you give any assistance to this or throughout the county? Because the same thing in Dunkin' Donuts or other restaurants. Some of them are closing early because they just can't get anybody to work. And I don't know how you fit into that program.
So one of the values that we serve is we have our executive director and we have a state legislator on staff as well. We have consistent communication with the state about that and many other issues. I know that speaking about our executive director, he is a restaurant owner himself or a grill owner and experiences that particular issue every day and is squeezed by like the rest of businesses in the area. Assistance that BDCC could give may include working with the business one-on-one in a counseling session to try and figure out if this is going to be a sustained issue that is levels much higher than any of us may work in. How does that, we can help that business understand how they need to pivot their operations to work with this contracted labor market, if that's what is going to be the reality of looking forward to.
This may be out of your scope. Do you feel like we're coming out of the recession? Are you sensing, since you're dealing with all these businesses, are they feeling optimistic or are they still just scrambling by?
So that's a great question that I wish I had specific numbers for right now. But at least within the past four to five months, probably, we've seen what I think is surprising even some of us at BDCC, an overwhelming amount of new business activity and a re, sort of a reawakening of business activity that had slowed down during the pandemic. And I think, at least from my point of view, I'm sure there are people doing research at a much higher level that might contradict this point of view. But it does seem to me that, I think everyone is eager to resume activity that was happening before. And I do see us coming out of the other side of that.
That's good. That's good. I have a couple more questions. First of all, with respect to the town of Grafton, could you be more specific about what assistance you gave to us working with Bill? And also, I'd just like to check in on the number of people that your per capita charge is based on, our population of 679,000. You don't hide me, but can Bill know better about that?
I think they use the census bureau. Did you use the last 2010 census?
Yes, I do believe that we always adjust our funding request to the previous census, which I am also tracking to be 679.
So that was from 2010?
Yes.
And what about the town of Grafton? What, how did they use your services?
So I'm unfamiliar with the specifics of the communications that Sarah Lang with the Southern Vermont Economy Project has been doing. What I understand it to be early conversations about how to, early conversations with respect to supporting infrastructure, sustaining infrastructure in the community of Grafton and developing strategies for that. I'm sorry, I can't be more specific than that.
I don't remember. It probably had to do with how we were going to deal with our meetings and keeping it open as long as, as well as dealing with other items. Can you remember? I don't, I'd have to go back and look at that.
No problem. I think, Gabriel, if you could just get back to us with those two action items. The reason I'm asking is obvious. We'd just like to be really familiar with the specific impact that STEVZ has on Grafton if we consider this budget item.
You have some.
Gabriel, at the beginning, you said in COVID, there was $2.3 million in paycheck protection? Was that, and I understood that to be just with Grafton. Is that, was that the whole county or was that just Grafton?
So pardon me, that was a, so it was $2.3 million for the whole region and it was 204,598 for Grafton.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Anybody have any other questions?
A question on infrastructure. We own the school building, the town does. Would that be included in any kind of cost, or can I answer improvement? Maybe Bill can answer that.
It isn't. I would say no. We own the land. They own the building as if they own, they own it out. They lease the building for a dollar and they're responsible for everything.
I thought we owned the building.
No.
The town.
Yeah, well, we own the building, but it is if they own the building. We don't do anything. We don't paint one board, we don't do anything. The school has all the costs. They rent that property and the building for a dollar with everything just like it was when they owned it. We don't do a thing.
So as far as infrastructure that you help, would your company or your services help a school system in Grafton or in Wyndham?
So I think that the extent of support that we generally give to the school system is the career development training that I was speaking about. Our assistance with infrastructure or supporting town facilities generally falls outside of the school supervisory unions because those have a very direct funding source, from what I understand, coming directly from the state. We're, as everyone understands more about the American Recovery Plan, where guidance is making its way to the state and then the state to each community, we're supporting communities and navigating how best to use that particular funding resource. And that may, I think even schools, the supervisory unions themselves are receiving their own direct portion of that recovery plan.
And they are.
And so I would say that generally, we're supporting community infrastructure. Schools will fall outside of our scope because our focus is on community infrastructure that is underserved because they may not have a very specific funding resource like the supervisory unions do. So for the Community Facilities Program, I'm generally looking at physical town offices like this that need redevelopment assistance, the community church, like I mentioned, or private nonprofit organizations that have infrastructure that they need to improve.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Daniel? If not, thank you.
Okay.
And if we will get any information that was requested, Bill would be appreciated.
Yes. With, sent in directly to?
To Bill. To Bill on the hills.
Yeah, thank you.
And you have all the contact information on Bill's.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you all. I appreciate it.
I would report the COVID on Rideout Street Road. Danny, you listen to this?
Yeah. So just above Kent and Armstrongs, I'm ready to return to steel cover. It's kind of narrow right there. During that, the high water that we had, it's at the bottom of that. It peeled it up and stood it up straight inside of it. So the bottom is getting bad. And just want to know what you guys want to do with it. We got the bottom laid down and it now, but it's only going to keep doing it or get worse. For a steel cover, and I have a permit from Scott Jensen to replace it. To put a 10-foot squash tube in there, the cover itself is 10/5. We could also put a four or five-foot plastic in there and that would be around $7,000. That's just for the cover. No, the town would have to do the work for that kind of braces. No, it's, they're not making us do a vaults or nothing. These let us do this.
Should we wait to see if people will do anything on it? See if it was damaged or?
We can, but to order, they didn't give me a lead time. I wouldn't do this deal just because of the price of it. But plastic is five to eight weeks out to get a cover. And they don't even guarantee you that, but that's what they're saying. You know, it could be five, eight weeks. So we wait to hear from FEMA. It's going to put it out over the season.
You're going to be able to do it this season anyways, are you?
You're going to have.
What we got to do, we know pitch with the flood work and all the work. Here we are in September.
So you have five to eight weeks to get it in, like once you get the cover. Or you just leave it and hope for the best and do it next summer.
Can you do any kind of repair without the cover there?
No, it's. We went on flat and bogged back out, you know. We don't get any real high water, we're standing back up until, you know, who knows with the next storm.
So did it cause much erosion?
No, not here, not this time.
I'd like with FEMA. We have to get it for five to eight weeks. It's very hard to get it in this year anyways. So if FEMA wouldn't do it, you could order over winter cut and add it to the grid.
I'll have to just check to make sure that Scott honors that permit.
Yeah. I mean, FEMA was, John said FEMA was awful, so they might be here next week. Hopefully it'll come soon.
But did it levy that Bill send out, say that FEMA, that we were encouraged to go ahead and do the repairs and that FEMA would reimburse us? Or did I misunderstand that, Bill?
In this type of thing, in this type of thing, if this would be. The problem is, they're not going to allow us to, unless they agree it is, it has to be replaced, they won't pay to replace it at all. They won't pay anything. So the only way you can convince them that they have to be replaced is if they see the condition on it, right? Don't think.
Right, but they don't, they don't pay the family cover. It's conditioned by the flood because it's a steel cover. So you'd have to litigate that cover to see if they would replace it, which I've never seen them get to with money or stuff.
That is the other issue is, you know, there is a good chance they would not, of course.
It's the same with the two Dick DeRochers. Which I do have a permit for that one too.
So Danny, could you just be real clear about what your recommendation is, please? If that's something.
I'm bringing it up because it's up to you guys to find the money to do that. And I know we spent a lot and I don't know how much we're really getting back yet. The one at Kent, it'd be nice, if they're not going to extend the permit and do it next year, I would, I would like to see it done this year. Because I don't want to see us putting $150,000 box cover in there. If they're going to extend the permit, if that cover floods, it's literally going to take out just the road or a stray cross. And if that happens, then the state can pay for it anyways. The one by Dick DeRochers, we all know it goes every time it comes up, it goes over. And you're looking at about the same cost at either site because it's about, it's the same size cover and about the same distance across the road.
I don't think I've seen anything like this. If we haven't had FEMA, we've spent a lot of money so far. And with the tax rate that is going to be with the reappraisals and everything else, nobody really knows what the tax rates are, but I bet you they're going to go up. So I mean, that would be my, I'm not taking the floor, that would be my personal.
So what you want to do, Danny, is put something inside the existing cover and stuff to hold it? Or?
No, you'd be replacing the whole.
Replacing it. And that was $7,000 with that. That was for the steel one, I think.
But that doesn't include the material of the stakes.
That's just the cost of the cover.
What size was that?
10/5.
Oh, that was on a four- foot bus.
And that's the same at DeRochers?
Yes.
And then the other problem is that you have a lot of work to do. I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of, we really need to finish it.
Work-wise, Katie's working on the flooded up a few days this week. So Fisher Hill Avenue will be, I think he finished today. He's working on Middle Town Road tomorrow on a cover to replace that last one up there. P and L stripped out of this one and this there, they're going to be here for at least a week. I think most of the covers and ditched up will, I mean, there will be in a week's time. It's going to, we're going to do that list down pretty fast because it's not all the same. We do still have a lot of gravel to put up, Keenley Brook and Kittergover.
And are you doing hydroseating too?
I did not, I worked on it this year.
But did, didn't you use the belt claw machine?
Yeah, it takes time until late in the year. I'm not, I'm not working, trying to, with the leaves and stuff, they're falling already. I'm going to try to hydroseate this time. I tried to get to hydroseate now, it's about impossible. It's been worked for three months, I got covers and it still hasn't come through.
Danny, what about the pole, the pole you wanted to be in the snowmobile bridge? They can fix that too?
That's called in the dig stage that after Wednesday will be cleared so they can do that, to do that cover. That's a cover, it's an issue there.
Where is that?
Just before the old school stuff, someone trying to.
It's near the storm over there.
Probably Rock Mile or the mine line, okay.
With the last trailers, yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, that's our lane.
Yeah.
The one on the way.
Yeah.
That's true, they could do the work.
Yeah, but we own that side of the work.
No, you're not talking about the same spot. It's the same cost and it is the three houses that was there. Across the drive bridge.
Oh, down that way.
Down the breaks, more poses the greater.
Oh, yeah, down there on your guitar.
Like, oh, I know.
Yeah, that's the one, I'm sorry. I thought it was.
And what are you doing there?
We're getting the cover. And some of these covers, I don't know if FEMA are going to, they're going to pay for that type of stuff.
The one by the snowmobile bridge?
Yes.
Where they dug it out, but it's, if our car goes along the right inside of the road, they're tied up, they go right off and then.
But it's not all, it's just that's linked with the cover.
Yeah, I know, but maybe there ought to be a garden or something there that's on top of there.
It's just like.
They're not.
Money is the big thing at the end of stuff.
Yeah, and what happened to the gold, the broad rail replacement, it's fine, 35? It's going to show up?
Well, yeah. Like all companies, they all say they want to work, you know, teams that want to show up. So the message I got was in the beginning of October, around the fourth.
One whole year, right?
Exactly.
All right, so what does the board want to do about these, just the one cover on Rideout? And I think Danny, Danny, you picked some direction from us.
So Danny, I just want to make sure I understood what you said, which is, if you could not get the permit extension, you would likely the cover this year? Okay.
And I go, I mean, I've tried most of all.
And when, when would you know whether you're going to get the cover, the extension of the?
He should have told me earlier. It's good enough for next year.
And so by definition, if you can get it extended, you'd be okay waiting?
Yeah.
But should we find out that piece of information before we decide? Since that's Danny's recommendation?
Or you could make a motion, Suzanne, that we don't do the cover this year unless they can't extend the permit. Because that's what we want to do. I mean, that would cover that issue.
I can, I mean, you guys can, I can have Bill send an email around and figure that out.
Either way.
I'll try getting the whole south around.
Just wait until we, yeah?
What do you think? What do you think?
Needs to be replaced, but we've got so much work to do that you're just adding more work to it. I'd like to see this flood work finished and done with. And the other stuff, the normal maintenance like that is still, you know, great things to do. And there's other stuff that I'd like to see that done first before we add more work to the highway here.
Danny, you would have answered this. What's the, what would happen if we did put this off to spring? Could there be an impact up there, or?
If it falls up against the bottom again, it closes the COVID off or washes it up right there. Which would end in a disaster, it should go straight across.
Well, we need to do something. We can't leave it alone though. We have to say yes or no or whatever, so. It's not what everybody likes to do.
I hate to have that little wash out because if you want heavy rain. I'd like to see it repaired, but we can get the extension to this deal.
Well, whether you want to do it this year or you want to do it next year, if you get the extension. That's the real question. It has to be the thing, whether you do it this year or you do it next month.
Okay.
And what are you gonna use to pick our?
Have we completed our COVID fund if we weren't counting FEMA?
Yes.
Right, so even without FEMA's money, we still have over $1,000 COVIDs.
Ooh, wow. That's a good data point.
But, but the issue, the real issue though, is if they don't extend the permit, will they issue a permit for next year to do the same COVID? Or are they gonna require a different COVID? That's seventy-eight thousand dollars, the $7,000 labor might end up to be fifty or sixty thousand dollars. I don't know if they want to submit box of COVID in there or something.
That's what I.
That is the issue that you have to, that you have to deal with.
Kim, from your perspective, I, would there be, I mean, could we borrow a computer if they fall in anyway? Or are you saying that because that line item is depleted, that it would be a food to prove another COVID?
Well, if we get the FEMA funds, we'll be all set. We don't, we will just dip into the amount that we have of the hundred thousand. And then start paying on that. So we do have a amount there that we can.
Yeah.
We can dig into.
I just wondered from a process standpoint, since we're only 24 hours or so away from knowing whether that, that application can be extended or not, how proved would it be for us to just wait, get that information and decide?
Just wait, give the Phil loan, what Scott says, he can send you an email, then you're gonna decide then.
But it, why not just condition your motion on?
Yeah.
Getting the extension or not getting it.
Yeah, I would rather, I would rather, I would rather do a motion than to have a call over the internet. That kind of, it kind of runs, you know, really, you really need to call a special meeting to do it rather than. But if you do a, if you do a meeting subject to.
Yeah.
A motion subject to, then if it, if it's not extended, then you do it. If it is extended, then you do it next year.
Okay, I'm happy to make that motion. I'm second.
Do you have any more discussion? Okay, so you have 400,000 dollars worth of money that we spent on flood. If we can get this work done and get a figure on it, it's gonna be much easier to collect the money than if the work is not done and they have to go out and inspect it. That's the only thing I get that, it's just, it's tough when they pay it.
The flood work would be done before the COVID is done. You're talking eight weeks out before we do that. By the way, we did grade in all its week. Most of the flood stuff we're having the contractors do. The only thing we have to be involved in is leveling gravel. The ditch stuff is P and L and Jamie Gary. And they said, this week, most of that will be done. You know, it's, it's just a matter of knowing that if we wait six weeks and then decide to do it, there's no way you could do a COVID time.
Okay. Can you give an estimate when all the flood work that we're doing right now? I'm not talking about the stuff that we're waiting for FEMA to come, like all the big COVIDs and stuff, but. Can you give a date in weeks when all that COVID work will be done?
Depending on the paving exams, I would say three weeks.
Three weeks. I doubt FEMA will be here in three weeks. If they showed up over there, they showed up saying, we're around there. They're not doing it, I'm guessing. Because they got it set up. And they haven't even, they, they just got the request last week. They haven't even answered the question yet. So they're not gonna be in town for three weeks. We should have all that work done.
If you can get all the work done in three weeks, Danny, that would be good.
Yeah.
One twenty-one down there, Wednesday, we're planning on putting a COVID across to that project. Basin, with the day they gave me when I got to the weekend, week and a half ago, they should be here any day to finish up milling. And then they should be stacking the paving. Like I said, whether they show up when they say is out of my control.
But you have some work to do there and the town has work to do.
We have one COVID that we're gonna do Wednesday. The only reason it's happening that late is because we, we have a flag, we have one flag here.
Yeah, well, Walter's not here anymore.
So, yeah, so one of the highways got a flag. To do it, it's not just two people to do about sixty feet of COVID in one, one day. So that's, that's what we have to do and grade it for them to pay. The rest of the work can be done after they pay. Most of it has to be done after they pay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, to replace the COVID this year if we can't get the extension. If not, we get the extension and replace it next year. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Will we announce or you just stay in the? I'm standing. Okay, so it's, it's four to one extension. Okay, we have the paving bid for Towns Road down. Janet and Altraboll's house. You have a bid still or? Because I have a standard from Bill, we only have one bid.
Yeah, one bid.
It was received on September fifteenth.
From the old Floodfield Payment Company, which now is like in Sunny Peak, is that correct?
Sunny, yeah. Sunny Peak Paying LLC. Maybe we could complete it this year. The total bid is nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Can you give me that, Bill?
Danny, is that more than you thought it was gonna be?
One plus.
Well, not bad.
Maybe a hundred and thousand dollars. At a price, do they say per ton?
It's lower than nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
You can do it by the ton. One plus than when I was voted by other companies, but it wasn't a lot of that on the.
Yeah, we decided to consider the thousand. That's the ninety-five?
Yes.
Now, you have to understand, we have to, somebody's gonna remove all the pavement and all the way, that'll cost us two thousand. For him to always cut, cutting all the way to paying is two thousand.
Roughly that.
Roughly two thousand. And then we have to grade it, prepare it. All they're gonna do, that, that is just paving.
So to get that ready for paving, it's gonna cost two thousand dollars.
But what we're gonna pay, so the P and L will take the asphalt that's there. Now, we gotta cut the road at the two ends for them. They will dig it out, heat case for all the trucking for getting the old asphalt. But we gotta pay them for the estimator time. I think it was two grand and he figured roughly for, for estimator time. Didn't dig it out.
So the twenty-one thousand.
That, Bo Mag, like we did on one twenty-one, I had a quote of $20,000 to do that. And that's why I went this other way. Three grand cheaper.
Well, we had a favor.
That money, that, that money there, we're such a small portion back from. Great. So from the flood, we should give that for FEMA for.
Having to repair that area.
Of course. The difference will come out of the treatment, retribution.
Right, then we didn't have the money.
Yes.
It's left, it's a leftover, we'll need to treat as well.
Sixty or seventy gallons a month. And then after, after the project roughly. We're still a little bit tired, so we'll.
The base, one and a half, is that efficient?
Kathy, I can't hear you.
The base amount, two and a half and one and a half, is that efficient?
Yes, that is what our standards are. That would be two and a half inch of base and just a half.
Do we have a motion to accept the bid?
No.
Sunny Peak Payment Company on Towns Road?
No.
Is that, that sufficient? Waving bid to Bill for the second bid? Do we have a favorable discussion? If not, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess so that you know, the federal grant, you need to put it out there in a certain way. I put this bid out to probably ten paper paving companies and about, I have at least four, maybe five, maybe six refusals. And refusals are as good as bids as far as FEMA is concerned. They just wanna make sure that you got it out there so people have a chance to get it.
Okay. Anything else, Danny, or Highway? If not, thank you, Danny.
Yes.
Um, Kim?
First of all, I guess on the agenda is we're approaching the budget season. So Ryan had asked earlier if we are able to pull up and decide when we'd like to have our first budget meeting?
Did everybody bring their calendars?
Yes.
And Bill and I were talking and we're hoping between us, Bill's gonna be gone for some October, I'm probably gonna be gone for some October. So we were kind of hoping at the twenty, the week of the twenty-fifth, somewhere in that week, that would work.
The twenty-fifth of COVID?
Yeah.
Um, for me, I'm not sure, I don't have the dates. I think I've gone twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. I postponed my name indication and that's where I'm supposed to go. So I have to double check to see. Later in the week would be okay for me. What we did last week, last year, we took a day every week. We did it every Thursday. Makes it easier. So if we could find the date that everybody's happy with, then we know. And we, we had three meetings, I think, last year. We had two long meetings, two hours each. And then I think the third one was shorter. We revised some of the budgets. So probably be the same as next year, this year, I would think. So.
I'm not available on the twenty-eighth that week, otherwise.
I'll be twenty-sixth on Tuesday.
I'm not sure if I'm home. Yeah, I don't, I come home Monday or Tuesday. I don't have it in my calendar. I hope so, let me see some.
When is Zoom, when is Saturday?
That's okay.
And would that be for you, Kim?
I would just make sure I'm here.
Yeah, you.
Are you looking during the day or the evening? I can do the evening.
I was thinking during the day, but. Can we start it first week in November? Would that, would that be enough time? It's only one week later.
Yeah, um. Yeah, so once we get the three minutes, you know, we can get it each week that we want.
Yeah, if you do one, let's, let's say we do it on the fourth, just to discuss the purposes. So if we did it on the fourth of November, the eleventh of November, I think you'll get most of your budget done. And then you could have another one sometime after Thanksgiving for the final. Depending on the fire department and, and everybody else who has to come in and, for then.
All right, so.
Can we make it available on Zoom? I work, so.
Yeah, everything will be on Zoom.
He's gonna be doing it later.
So the first one, you'd like it to be eleven-four?
I don't know, I'm just, I just pick that as a date, I don't know.
That's, that's I would make.
It's Veterans Day, that's. That's Veterans Day. Does that make, does that make it, does she anybody?
Eleven-four? Eleven-four sounds good.
Now, if you were to start the project, to, is that gonna be the time that you're gonna ask any of the organizations to come forward with their requests?
Yes.
Because the United States, we had them all here at the same time.
Well, we would, we should have the request prior to our meeting. So that we have it ahead of time to take a look at it. And then they should come here on, if the fourth is the date, and they should be prepared to explain their budget on the fourth. But don't come in with the, with the budget on the fourth and say, here it is.
Right.
So Bill, Bill should send out a notice to all concerned and have, give us, give us a week ahead of time. And that gives them plenty of time to do it.
Okay. Um, so and then going back to that, then also reviews or any increases need to be done by then.
Right. The person else can make her to do that.
Have them done, completed. That would be helpful. I will get together, the paving work, put it in your boxes. You should actually do the worksheets with your blanks. Um, we'll do that. I'll tie those in your boxes within the last week.
Hardy, you have a question?
Yeah, we, I need to know if I'm the capital budget chairman, I need to know who's on the committee. Last year, we only had about four people, Bill, Harry, Cynthia and myself, John. And I think that was good.
Was it Danny? Is it, is it your executive over that committee? Or is that?
You should have, I think you should have somebody from the road crew on it. Somebody who lives in town there.
I mean. Didn't you, weren't you, Danny, weren't you on it before?
I was years ago.
That's what I mean.
And I mean, I, every year, I do, I use the information it needs, but if I was actually being on, I don't think I, I am.
Well, you want to remember, you were an executive, I think. I think that's what I thought.
And I know last year, John Wake was on it, but she didn't come to the meeting, so I don't know what she's.
She's not interested.
That's what I found. And Jason Parson-Balls was on the committee, but he didn't show last year.
I'm not sure.
And Joe Valenti is gone.
He's gone.
I mean, there's people that are missing. We wanna have more people. And Linda was on last year and she was at the meeting. So I'm sure Cynthia will do it.
Yeah, I'll.
Kim will do it.
So do we need more citizens to be on it?
Well, that's a question of, we should have people who are interested in.
In budgets and that kind of. Can we have some time, Hardy, to think over possible.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there so that somebody can get that to me, which is on the committee, so I can arrange the meeting.
And then when do you want the recommendations from this letter?
Well, eleven-four might be a little early and I'm sure we're, you know. I gotta know what date you want us to present something. It's a right instead of, they ask me.
Well, yeah, I think under the, under the guideline, we're supposed to present a request, or is that, isn't that how it works?
We submit a request to you and you either approve it or disapprove.
Right.
And then it goes to the, the open.
So of your.
The opening here. So that's three part thing. Presentation.
So are we doing the fourth and the eleventh? Or the fourth and we don't have a second, the second date yet, or are we doing another date?
We didn't set a second date.
Well, we should have two, we should have actually three days. Two in November and then more later on, first of December. But we still have plenty of time, in case.
We don't have a whole lot of time. I have to put together, I mean, that's like a long report to put together, plug in the numbers for it, it has a report. Who's in mind?
Well, then you could do, you know, you could do it three days in. Well, then you could do, you know, you could do it three days in a row. Three weeks in a row, I'm trying. I mean, is everybody, can everybody do it the fourth, the eleventh, the eighteenth? Eleventh being Veterans Day, is that a problem for anybody here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So you can't do that. Think you're doing, can't do it on Wednesday, can do it on Friday. The twelfth.
Or Tuesday.
Or Tuesday. We just gotta get the dates down, that's all. So is the four, four is the first date? Is that okay, Kim, everybody?
Yes, we're talking November fourth.
Right, yeah. And we need, we need something the week of the eighth, so the eleventh is Veterans Day.
Ninth. Good time.
Final day.
Ninth is good.
Ninth is good. November ninth.
And then we need one more date, and then one of the, the twenty-fifth is Thanksgiving, I think.
The sixteenth?
Well, I, don't you, don't you think we need a week ahead of time? Kim, do you wanna do it? We did that last year, we had, we had a meeting a couple of weeks later, because there was some, some concern for some of the board members and, but that's up to you.
Why don't we just wait until you're on the ninth, and then we can plan it.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
It's hard to try to get that on the first of the ninth.
All right.
Yeah.
We're talking about November. I'm gonna pick the jury to be stacked November. It'll be a few days, so.
As long as we have your budget in front of us, we don't feel, all right. Well, you can get spewed, Kenny. Kenny? No? You can't get spewed anymore?
Uh, boy, read the paperwork, it's pretty clear. You better be really sick. A whole paper comes about COVID and that, you know. Cause that's, that's, I can't understand it.
My reason.
Uh, with regards to Hardy's thing, I will, you guys, you have to appoint the cabinet. Yes, we need names. And so I figured you'd do that October fourth, which is our next meeting. That's fine. Okay, we can get it together for October fourth, okay?
And Bill, could we just get to use some ideas for who might be willing and good to.
That's the whole idea, why you have till October fourth, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be great to get people who have some knowledge of the, of the, you know, the roads and the situation, it makes it, it makes it a lot better. If you can find volunteers. How many meetings is that, one or two?
Uh, well, usually there's one major meeting.
Right.
With everybody on the committee.
Right.
And then we develop our recommendations, which we then present to you.
Okay, so, so basically, really, the person just has to have one, one basic meeting.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right, the abatement, that's your, your thing?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted for the record, just so that I can follow through all. I did receive a request for a possible abatement. Um, the abatement on George and Janet's, we, um, I received it on nine thirty twenty-one. And going through preparation and preparing this abatement, a possible abatement, which falls under the Homestead Declaration penalty. It doesn't quite qualify in some of the timelines, and so on September the sixteenth, after speaking with Janet, they have then sent a withdrawal for the abatement, so they don't wanna go through the process. Um, so I have that in writing, the withdrawal, I'm not writing the request. So just for the record, I don't wanna let you know that, it's, I'm taking care of this, it's all.
There's nothing you want us to do?
There's nothing you have to do, no. I just wanted in the minutes that, um, I did my obligation and I presented it.
You have any, anything else, Kim?
Um, no, I think it's short. I'm all set.
Okay. All right, then, do you have any, anything else, Kim, before we move on? Okay, cemetery committee, John, do you wanna?
No, go ahead. Um, John and I, Bill, walk the property in, in Deaconville Cemetery. And Bill's kind of mapped out an area, and we are scheduled to meet with the owner of the property sometime at the end of this month.
At the end of this month, that, that weekend after the end.
Yeah, and see how, what he, what he has in mind, and whether it's gonna be for sale or donated or whatever. So we're, we're continuing that process. Also, John and I and Bill, because of Walter's medical condition, we looked at the cemeteries, and they're all mowed, they're all in good shape right now. Uh, and, but there's gonna have to be some maintenance done in the next couple of weeks or months, clearing leaves and maybe another mowing, so the question is, what are you gonna do about it? Yes?
I talked with Austin, who was here. And he talked, we talked. And he's gonna keep his eye on it, and he can get the mower, the power push mower, off the ride along, around, and if he needed to get the bigger mower around, I told him, just contact us, we'll find some way to move it. Okay. Where, I think Paul, the only place he uses the ride along is in Oakdale, right? Does, doesn't, isn't that one that Alfred uses? Isn't that ours, is that, you just have to push? Okay, I don't think you have to push it, but it makes. Okay. Anyway, Austin said that he would keep an eye on it and, and would let us know if he needed anything, he would, he would.
Okay.
Well.
Perfect.
Okay. Yes, Kim?
The other, that's the two, I, I don't think it will be that complicated. If it's too much for Austin, is, um, we do have, I don't know, students that does the, the rest of the kind of grants that possibly you could do, get removal or something like that. I mean, maybe a little extra on there than what's taken from the cemetery. Until we either finish up.
Okay, well, John and I will keep, keep an eye on it and proceed to. Okay, Highway Committee, you have anything other than, you just talked about everything here?
Yep.
Parks, there's, the only thing that, that you wanna tell us, assign it.
Well, I don't know, people been to the, to the Village Park, but the sign is up and it's beautiful.
It's beautiful, yeah, it is.
That's it, and the park looks great, they've been working hard as you walk through there. They're clearing, and it's looking really good up there.
Okay, I, I do believe, let's go, know something different, they heard, there's no response to the application for the grant that, that we know, yeah.
No, we don't expect that from them.
I heard it on, you guys have got something, so.
Yeah, we, we met with Tim and Bill, we had two meetings with Bill, we met at the driveway, and got some response back. Um, they still would like to have more response, um, because we handed out the draft. And we proposed three days in October, October sixth, seventh, and eighth for follow-up meetings. Um, I haven't heard anything of either of them. Um, it's a first again, and come up with a final draft, um, which would be October eighteenth. One of the suggestions that we had is to add Columbus Day, Indigenous People Day. And I believe, um, in order for them to have that holiday this year, the board would have to make a motion to adopt that. Because if we pass everything or still have a continued discussion on the routine, they would miss out on that day.
Would the committee have to make that motion?
Yes.
Just for, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to add Columbus Day, Indigenous People Day, which is October, the October eleventh.
And say that again, which is?
October.
It's the second Monday. October, second Monday, yeah.
Um, add it as a holiday for our personnel, second.
And how many holidays do we have prior to this adding this, you know?
With this one, it'll be twelve.
Well. Do we have any discussion? Is everybody in favor of this? Do you wanna call a question?
Yeah.
All in favor of adding the Columbus slash Indigenous People Day holiday to the holiday schedule? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, I guess you have a reward. All right. Okay, Bill's for them, who's got the architecture? According to what Bill has told me, um, I don't know, they, they sent out bids to, how many architects firms?
To about twelve, thirteen.
So this is the only bid, this is the only bid you showed up and I visited, and the only bid to. There, I got refusal again, so they, it's the only bid.
When you get a refusal, well, would that explain the refusal with the say?
No, I don't, I, I need to know why the refusal, and generally is, is that they, they don't have time to do it or this is what they, this, this, that, or they do, but.
Do we have five here?
Yeah, we have exactly.
Well, that's why I said that.
All in your own.
Looking for the trading, I wonder if somebody can do it here, please speak up.
I would say it's under, tabbed under five. But before, I wouldn't want you to approve it tonight, I'd like to have, um, Jeff, Martell over with me, he's the one to help me prepare it, and, you know, he's architecture here.
No, I don't think we should approve it, I think we need to study it first.
So I'd like to have him look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to get, anybody even wanna, wanted to badger if you wanted to do that?
Well, Jeff would, Jeff would know, I just, he helped me with the formats, I guess.
It was twenty-six thousand six fifty, huh? It's not that high.
That's for the architecture, it's not put in it, and for the construction industry.
Yeah, that's from conception to end, in other words, he supervises it, he designs it and all that kind of stuff, and then you gotta have, you know, obviously a contract or bid on it. And I'm assuming, Bill, he'll help us with the bid, right? I think.
He.
He has the evidence.
Our, our.
Yeah, he, yeah.
Moses included that.
Precisely.
Once he takes it on, he takes on the whole thing, including, he handles all the bidding.
Yeah.
And, and he does the construction, he supervises construction, it's all laid out there.
Hardy?
How is this party, you pay for?
Through the, my, our.
The office.
The office. This is come out of capital budget for Townsend.
That's all I'm, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Depending on the price.
Yeah, depending on the price, obviously, I mean, if the thing goes to three hundred thousand dollars, then it's not gonna be covered, but.
Right.
With all the picture picture, I think it's gonna be covered over the funds.
To what extent has the, is it possible for the building committee to actually meet, even if it's virtually, with this architect, architect who's bidding? Has that happened already, or with the building committee? Yeah. I think it would be great if our building committee had a chance to meet and discuss the project with this architect who's bidding.
But no, that would be under existing commission, that would be, pardon. Those meetings, that, that's what those meetings are for.
I'm thinking, Bill, I wasn't clear, I'm thinking about in terms of, before we, before the select board, we would see, uh, before the select board approves, the only bid we've got. Would it be possible for the building committee to meet with the architect? Maybe you're not even interested in doing so, but that's what I'm just thinking.
Kathy, no.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
If you guys want to, then you can make a phone call and, and discuss it.
Yeah.
And then, um, obviously, uh, I think Bill's gonna have a check with Jeff, and I would say that on the next meeting, if everybody's happy, we would either approve or dismiss it.
Yeah, I could arrange a meeting with him on, you know, first meeting with him.
Yeah.
So he, he's, he's come out, so he would not come back all day.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be great.
Um, we'll, the Waze Water Committee, um, they were scheduling a meeting sometime, I think it's October sixth with the party, so that's, that process is in the, in the, it's beginning to happen and to kind of review where we are with the grant and contracts and that kind of thing, so. That's, that's ongoing.
Let me see.
October sixth.
And when you say party Joe, are you referring to Aaron, the dying mom?
Well, it won't be with everybody.
Oh, okay, so the office first, too?
Yeah, right, we're trying to get that set up, right. Uh, I think, um, as of this morning, we haven't heard from one individual yet, but we'll hopefully know. Any public comment? You sure?
Hey, you're doing a good job.
Thank you. The next regular meeting is October fourth at six P M, right here. Motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
All right. Second, second, if we learn, if they're all there, if they got it.
Aye.
Oh, okay, thank you, everybody.